Hello, good afternoon. I'm Marissa Elkins. I am Chair of the Northampton City Council Legislative Matters Committee, and I'm here with fellow co-chair of the Finance Committee, Rachel Maori. And this is a joint meeting of the Legislative Matters and Finance Committees of the Northampton City Council. So I will call this meeting to order. If I can get the roll call, please.
Sure. Okay, so I'll start with the role of Finance Committee. Counselor Maori.
Here.
Counselor Moulton.
Here.
Counselor Elkins.
Here.
And Counselor Labarge.
Here.
And then Legislative Matters, Counselor Elkins.
Still here.
Counselor Perry.
I think he just joined.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
And Counselor Maori.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I would note that, I just, note for the record that, no, for the record, that's a court thing. Just noting that Counselor Perry is with us on phone. He's coming and will be joining the meeting in. I mean, getting messages that there's no audio. I think that's something controlled. Yeah. All right, can people hear me now? All right, I got the thumbs up. You know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start over again. Welcome to, welcome to, what day is today? The Monday, May 13th, 2024 Joint Meeting of Northampton City Council Legislative Matters and Finance Committees. We are, sorry, just one second. We have one item on the agenda tonight, and that is an order to accept Chapter 329 of the Acts of 1987 referred by City Council on May 2nd, 2024. I'm going to ask that we call the roll again.
Okay. All right, starting with Legislative Matters, Counselor Elkins.
Here.
Counselor Perry.
Here, here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
And Counselor Maori.
Here.
And then Counselor Maori again for Finance.
Here.
Counselor Moulton.
Here.
Counselor Elkins.
Here.
And Counselor Labarge.
Yes, here.
Chair, you still have a quorum.
I still have a quorum. Very good. So, we will, I just want to make an announcement that the meeting is being audio and video recorded. We have Northampton Open Media here today, so I think this is also going out livestream on YouTube as well. So first on the agenda, we have public comment. I, at the discretion of the Chair, can limit public comment. I don't, actually, looking at the room and looking online, don't think it's gonna come to this, but I would be tonight in an effort to keep things tight, limiting coming, public comment to one hour with two-minute increments. You may speak on any topic, including what is on the agenda later, and you will, there will be a time for further public comment or question during the agenda item. And during that period of time, I will be asking people to only come to the podium once, but if you speak in public comment, you will not be, you will be able to speak to the agenda item too. So I hope that's clear. Anybody here think that's not clear? Are there any questions about that? Okay. So with that said, I have, I'm gonna start online based on, hands came up, we had somebody come in, in the council chambers, but since there were people online, I will start there first. So Nan S., make sure when you speak that you say your city and town before you start, and your name.
Nancy Smith, Javel Street. I'm asking committee members tonight to please give a positive recommendation to accept the provisions of Chapter 329 allowing councils to add to the school budget. We hear that other departments got only 2.5% increases and accepted it while the school was given 4% and asked for even more. But other departments with pain, they will have to postpone projects, equipment and vehicle replacements, will all have to keep driving around those potholes again, and more. But when schools have to cut back, they can't just postpone support for students who, like me, are neurodivergent, have dyslexia, dyscalculia, and dysgraphia, or a whole host of disabilities and needs I don't have. Once that year without services is gone, it won't be back, and the gap will continue to widen on those children. There is no more important obligation a city has than educating and preparing our children for the future. The arts and sports are where we find our niche, our confidence, our community commitment, and sense of teamwork. For those who don't find their spark in sports, art is a key to finding that spark, a community, and for many, vital acceptance. We can't just say, "Well, we'll have to not educate and support X number of our children." It's not that simple. When staring at piles of spreadsheets and a sea of red ink, we can get lost in the numbers. The Department of Community Care has grown from two to nine employees, over 50% its first year. Services are being provided, and that's a good thing. While we purchased a resilience hub building in need of very substantial money to renovate, all services are being provided now without that building. Lots of marketing is happening around this before the cost is revealed. The building is a nice-to-have. I believe the school should come first. While there may be few of any counselors who agree with me, I want all of you to at least have the ability to increase the school budget. We need more than one person to make these critical decisions. I want my city council to be more than a rubber stamp, so please, give a positive recommendation tonight. Sincerely thank you for all you do, even if you don't agree with me on anything. And special thanks to counselors Dubbs and Rothenberg for bringing this forward. Go Hampshire. Thank you.
Two. Thank you. And we forgot to get the timing apparatus started, but it is, it is now, so. We have one person in, actually, I, really, we have two people in chambers. I don't know if either of them are signed up to speak. Do either of you wanna?
I'm here to listen.
Okay. Then I will go to, I believe the next hand I saw up was Bill Dwight.
Hi, yes, Bill Dwight, City of Northampton, municipal daddy, I guess. I'm here, I'm queued up to manswain. Communities throughout the state, throughout every state actually, recognize the value of schools. And in fact, I should point out that everyone on this debate, or most of the people on this debate, pro or con, all have children or have had children in the Northampton Public School. So the communities have invested the importance of the, as the previous speaker spoke about, of schools. In fact, it's primary. In fact, so the reason we have school committees is because the budget is dominated by the school funding. And so the school committees are actually there for that purpose because it is such a large portion of the municipal budget. So that my concern about this provision is that what it does is virtually render the school committee looped. The school committee actually has a more granular understanding about what the circumstances are, what the requirements are, and the principal authority that they're vested with is fiduciary oversight. The city council has fiduciary oversight as well, but the fact is that you actually have to be, you will have to be well-versed in all things, and you should be. But to the extent that the complications and the difficulties involved in such a substantial portion of the budget should actually be focused, be the exclusive focus of the school committee. So you, I don't think this is the best way to proceed as far as this goes. I think that it's more important that the school committee exercise their responsibility, and then, you know, since everyone's an advocate for the schools, they're not just advocates, they have to go beyond that. And they have to understand that the challenges that face everybody. And so I hope that you will not put this in favor of the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Meg Robbins.
Sorry, got that up. Hi, and thank you. I'm going to speak in favor of your voting for this 329, Chapter, Acts of 87, on the grounds that I think it's something we should have done in 1987. Many school committees, many districts, many councils throughout the state that are run by cities have approved this. Some of them approved it at that time, some of them approved it in the last few years. And it is a system of checks and balances that both protects our rights as constituents when monies are being decided on from adamant no on the behalf of one person to be able to make sure that our elected officials are representing us and can have a conversation about it. So it gives you, the city council, a right to really seriously consider, and we know that you will, how to balance a budget and how to put together the request of a school committee. It's the part of the school committee to say, "These are the amounts of money we need to run the schools, and we're sending it to you in your professional or your elected positions to really give it due consideration." But it also protects us against what happened, for example, in Greenfield a couple of years ago, where there was a mayor who really wanted to defund schools, and she just pulled the plug on them. And if Greenfield hadn't voted on this and didn't have it in their city charter, they would have only been culpable for net spending across the state, and that would not have funded Greenfield schools. And so having this as a safeguard is a win-win any way you look at it. You still have the right to vote for a budget or against a budget, as does the mayor. And we trust you to do the right thing along those lines. This came after Proposition 2.5. It was put in place as a safeguard, and the reason there was an opt-in was largely due to the influence of the same proponents of Proposition 2.5. So instead of making it clear legislation, they made it the opt-in. I don't know why it has just come to the surface now, and it was voted on many years ago by some districts.
Hey, Meg, could you just finish your sentence? Thank you.
But I encourage you to think of this as something that is a safeguard for yourselves and for the citizens and kids in our district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Andrea Gito? Gito, sorry. Hi, Andrea. Oh.
Well, thank you so much. I would like to speak in favor of this provision and of the city council opting in to this provision. It is critically important for the democracy of our city that our elected officials have the power to discuss and make the best decisions for the city, whether that is increasing line items, changing parts of the budget. It makes me feel a little nervous that one person in the city has the power to put forward numbers where elected officials from each ward and are at large. Counselors do not have the ability to change that or in any way adjust those. I agree with Bill Dwight about that the school committee should have the power to present a budget, and I believe that is what happens. And so it should also be that that budget has the opportunity to be presented to the city council where you can then vote to provide that amount that was budgeted from the school committee. So if you all have that, those thoughts, you get to hear from your constituents, and you can make the best decisions for our city in opting into this provision so that we can move forward and create a budget as democratically as possible. Thank you so much.
What was her name?
Andrea Gito.
Unless anybody in the room wants to speak?
I haven't signed up, but I'll.
Oh, no, come on. There's no more hands on the Zoom.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kathy McNally. I'm at from Tugleason Road in Northampton. And when city councilors run for office, at their potlucks and cocktail parties and events, and I've been to millions of them, they often say something, and they say something really kind of moving.
Okay. I remember when, yeah, I remember when somebody first said it, and I thought, "That's a really good campaign statement." They say, "Northampton is a challenging place to be in the legislative branch because there's such a strong mayor system." And you really need someone who's willing to kind of think independently and, you know, just speak for constituents. And I thought that was great, and I hadn't really even thought about that before, when I heard it about 10 years ago. And then I heard other people say it. Then when people get into office, because it's weird to be in office where you see the mayor and you're working with her and all that stuff, something else happens. And what happens is people begin to use a statement that seems more like a campaign statement than a governing statement. And that statement is, "I trust the mayor." Now, the mayor is extremely trustworthy and has a character of the highest caliber, as past mayors have had. This is nothing personal. But I feel like the phrase "trust the mayor" feels a little bit like an abdication of your duty to think independently and be a check and balance. So tonight, if you use that phrase, that's fine, of course, but if you would just tell us how you feel that phrase squares with your duty to be a check and balance and think independently. So I want to finish, "The mayor is extremely trustworthy." I just don't think that's a phrase that belongs unadorned in a city council meeting. Thanks.
I'm gonna do a last call if there's anybody on Zoom that has, and I'm not, I'm not seeing anybody. All right, so, next one, do we have minutes to approve?
No.
No, right, okay. I didn't see it on the agenda. All right, so that moves us to item number five. The item's referred to Committee. So 5A, 24.064, in order to accept Chapter 329 of the Acts of 1987 referred by City Council. council on, and I apologize for repeating myself, May 2 of 2024.
Point of, or are you, or something, point of something, Solicitor Seawald wanted us to let him know when the public comment was done?
No, that's.
And I forgot my phone, so I can't do it.
I texted him and said that it looked like it wouldn't be terribly long. So I'll, you can text him again. And also Clerk Powers as well. But I can.
Point of information. There we go.
All right. We're just going to give a minute to see if Attorney Seawald and Clerk Powers, I think we anticipated a little longer public comment. So give us just one second.
Is it a public comment?
I was, I was gonna, yeah, so. Attorney Seawald says he'll be right on.
Not sure I have Pam's.
I got it from her earlier today to make sure that we could, I could let her know so she wasn't. Pam told me she was putting together her new electric bike. So, yeah. So she was gonna join the Zoom when it came time for that. Appreciate your patience. I was just going to go over once Attorney Seawald is here, like the, and I see that, I see Counsel Rothenberg and Dubs are both on the, here. So I'll speak to that in just a second.
Did you say Counsel Rothenberg is here?
There, she's with, with Counsel Dubs.
Oh, gotcha.
On Zooming?
Yeah.
I see him, but I.
Did I just see Attorney? Hi. Yes, yeah. All right. Attorney Seawald's getting on the Zoom, but I'm just going to lay out how I want to have, have the discussion go tonight. I'm going to recognize the sponsors for two minutes each of introduction. So if you can just have an opportunity to speak and tell us about your order and your, you know, statement about why you brought it. And then I'm going to have Attorney Seawald, Clerk Powers, Attorney Seawald and Clerk Powers are both available. And the sponsors, of course, will remain available for questions. So we'll have a discussion with those of us on the committee to ask those folks questions. That period of time will be us asking Attorney Seawald and Clerk Powers and the sponsors any questions that we might have. I'll then, I'm then going to open it up to a period for questions and comments for the, from the public. I would ask that we limit those times to two minutes and one turn at the podium, or the Zoom podium, as it were. And I've asked Counsel Moulton to act as our scribe so that as we get questions, we can take them down and then ask them of the, ask them of the sponsors and the Attorney Seawald and Clerk Powers if they're here. And then we'll close that part of the discussion for our deliberations. I'm going to ask that I prefer not to entertain any motions until we close the, this part of the discussion for deliberation. So, anybody, any of us folks have any questions about that? Okay. All right. So with that, I'm not going to be too, you know, not to be too strict about it, but Counsel Dubs and Rothenberg, if you could speak to your motion, and we're trying to keep it, keep it brief.
Thank you. I, we believe that it's important to opt in to this provision because the, the school committee has passed, they passed a budget, and they, they, they voted to send that budget to the city council for us to, to try to balance the budget and, and figure out if there's a way to, to give more, add more money to the school budget. This would allow us to consider budget requests directed from the school committee if there was disagreement between the mayor's budget and what the school committee passed. Right now, the city council can only cut things from the budget offered by the mayor or, or add completely new items that are not in the budget. And so as, as a city council, I would, I would appreciate the opportunity to try to, to try to help the school committee and, and they've asked us for, for help, and I'd like to have that opportunity. We might not pass the budget that they requested, but at least, at least we could have the opportunity for a conversation about it among all councillors. And, and I think that that's the best way to try to come to some sort of solution to, which is, which is obviously a, a, a big concern to a lot of people in North Hampton, a lot of students and teachers and staff. And I think that we owe it to them to, to give, to give this a shot and see if we can, see if we can get more money for schools.
Anything, Counsel Rothenberg?
Yes, thank you. So I think it's important to center ourselves on the children first and bear in mind that they don't have a vote or a voice, and that the school committee represents their interests. So I want to start there. And then I want us to hold in our minds all of the barriers that those children have to getting the funding that their advocates think that they need. And this opt-in is one of the barriers, because where we sit right now is a system where one person gets to set a limit on what the schools can have, regardless of whether their advocates disagree with that person or not. That's a very vulnerable, very tight bottleneck. And especially if you trust this mayor, it's a great time to opt-in, because you want to have this in place for the future, at a time when you don't trust your mayor potentially, a different mayor in the future it could be. And so because the mayor needs to also opt-in, it's good to do this during a time when you have a friendly mayor, but you have good relations with the council. The opt-in does not require us to get to that point, or even help us fully get to that point, where we would then be able to, again, thinking of the children, get them to that number that their advocates are asking for. The opt-in isn't a vote on the budget. It's just one domino that can fall, that can slowly bring us closer by several votes that have to take place before we would ever get to a point of being able to get the kids some more funding. And I think we're all learning about this process as we go, but it seems to me like some of those steps may be having the school committee formally recommend that we take up their budget for consideration, and then also having us as a council formally vote that we would take it up for consideration, and then also having us as a council vote to amend the line item for schools to whatever amount we think is appropriate, and then as a council voting to pass the budget, and then overcoming a male veto if necessary, and then as a super majority passing the budget. So I think there are many, many safeguards that keep us from doing anything that would be irresponsible. And I think it's really best for the children that we don't put up any barriers for them. I know this year, the public seems especially concerned about special education needs and what reduced staffing would look like, whether it's general ed staff or general ed offerings or special ed or special ed offerings. The public seems to overwhelmingly feel that this would have a negative impact, especially on our most vulnerable disabled students. And the constituents of Order 3 by and large feel that this is a civil rights issue that we want to support. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to hear from Attorney Seawald next.
Good evening.
Good evening. So Attorney Seawald, I'm going to start with you because I just wanted to ask if you could start and give us a, a sort of a, a brief outline of what this law is, how this amendment amended it, and what, what we're, what we're talking about here, and the research and what you reported back to Counsel Jarrett. I think we, there's folks on, on council were asking about how this provision worked, and, and you provided us with some legal research. So if you could kind of outline that.
Thank you. Good evening. So we start off with the, with the budget process. And the budget process begins with the mayor's bid to the budget after collecting data and proposed budgets from various departments, including the schools. And then the mayor submits a budget. Generally speaking, the city council can approve that budget with or without amendments. Failure to approve a budget will cause the budget to go into effect without a city council vote. So the, the council can either approve, can approve the budget either with or without amendments. Generally speaking, amendments are only decreases in line items in the mayor's proposed budget. The city council generally has no authority to increase line items in a budget. In 1987, the legislature passed an amendment to Chapter 44, Section 32. Now, Chapter 44, Section 32 is the statute that governs how cities pass budgets. Much of it's in Chapter 44, Section 32. With regard to the process for adopting a budget is what you will see in the city charter. And, but there are other provisions in that section that apply to the city because they are not dealt with in our charter. One of them is an amendment to Section 32 that happened in 1987. And Chapter 329 of 1987 provided a process for allowing the city council to increase the line item, or line items for the schools on a two-thirds vote after request by the city, by the school committee to exceed the mayor's proposed budget. So just mechanically, what would happen is that the mayor would submit her budget, and then the school committee, if it's dissatisfied with what the mayor has proposed, would meet again and make a formal request that the city council exceed the mayor's recommended budget. And then it goes, then it would go to the city council. In order to invoke this provision, the legislature was called an outside section of the statute. It's a, it's a section of the Act as passed that never got codified into what you see online or in the good old days, but what we see in the, in the statute books. It's, it's sort of off the books, but it is in, in effect. And it requires that the city council vote to accept that provision, and it requires that the mayor approve that acceptance. And by approve that acceptance, I mean that it is not subject to override if should the mayor decide not to approve that provision. I spoke with Ken Whitman, who is the chief of the, the legal division in municipal finance at DOR. And there's just not a lot of case law, there's no case law, and this is not a lot of law. This is something that's been invoked very often, according to him. I haven't done any independent research around the states to see where cities have invoked this provision. And it usually is handled in the way that financial orders are handled in the charter. And so if, if there's something that I haven't touched on, Counsel Elkins, I'll be happy to, to address it.
Good evening. Yeah, I just had, I wanted a clarification and maybe to address Bill Dwight's fear. I mean, this is very much, the school committee is very much a driver in that process of this provision, because don't they have to, am I correct that they have to put forth a formal proposal to, to city council to vote on? So it's not like city councils are doing it independently. Is that correct?
That's correct. There has to be a request from the school committee.
Counsel Jarrett.
Hi, Solicitor Seawald. My question is about, good evening. If, in order for us to increase the school budget, we either have to, as I understand, decrease another operating budget, use leftover capacity in the levy if we're not at our Proposition 2 and 1/2 limit, which, as I understand it, we are. And then what you mentioned today to me, that we could draw from a stabilization fund that is acceptable for that purpose, the general fund stabilization fund, or the general fund fiscal stability stabilization fund. So that, that's just something I learned or got, got a legal opinion on today. So could you clarify that?
Sure. In my conversation with Ken, he informed me that there's no standard way that these are handled from, from city to city, that is generally controlled by, by the charter. Absence a charter provision, I believe, in my opinion, that the city council could plug a hole by tapping funds that, that are not printed against the Proposition 2 and 1/2 levy letter, and such as the stabilization fund. This is the exception to the general rule that all appropriations must begin with a, a financial order filed by the mayor. This is the one exception to the general rule that the city council cannot increase a line item budget that was filed by the mayor.
And outside of this process, I have also heard some say that there, that the city council could appropriate outside of the normal budget process, funds from a stabilization fund to, I don't know, an account. I'm not sure. Do you see any path for that?
No, it's my opinion that all financial orders, other than financial orders associated with the increase in school funding that was allowed by 329 of 87, have to emanate from the mayor.
Thank you.
Anybody else here? I have a couple of questions. Is there, Attorney Seawald, is there anything saying if we were to adopt, adopt this provision? And so I, I heard you say that there's not any, like, great standardized way that cities in town too have done this, do this. But is there anything in the law saying with what kind of specificity the school committee would have to do to recommend us a number, or could they just give us a number?
I think they could just make a request that the city council request, request that the city council consider a number above the mayor's number.
And.
I don't think there's any formality to that.
And if counsel, if we did have this, if we adopted this provision and we wanted to take it up, could we insist of the school committee that they send us, if they wanted to make a recommendation, that they had to do it with the same kind of specificity that they, that we would get maybe from, you know, department heads or the department, other department, departments would give to the mayor in the process of her, in her process of making the budget?
Does the city council as a body could request whatever information from the school committee that it needed to consider the request?
Okay. I was looking at Mass General Laws, Chapter 44 today, and, well, let me ask you this. So, so Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 59, is it fair to call that, like, sort of an enforcement or remedy provision for the statutes in Chapter 44?
I don't have it on my screen right now, but I, but I do know that there are remedy provisions in Chapter 44, both for expenditures in excess for appropriations or appropriations that are not consistent with law. I mean, there are all sorts of provisions. We also have an auditor. We have our, we go through processes at DOR. So, you know, there are mechanisms for enforcing the rules around appropriation.
Okay. Just because I was looking, and Section 59 says that, that basically the attorney general or the mayor, or one or more taxable inhabitants of a city, town, or district, or creditor, may compel a city, town, or district to conform to this chapter. And I guess my, my question is, is if, if we had failed to note that we had opted into this, and we had tried to enact this provision, is there any chance that we could have been, the city could have been sued, or enforcement by the attorney general's office to enforce these provisions?
I really can't speculate about whether we'd be sued, or what the attorney general would do. It would probably end up being disallowed at some level along the way, either through our auditors or through audits that happen through DOR.
Okay. And, sorry, I have one more question. Are you familiar with, in Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 62?
I can pull it up if you need me to, but I, I don't have it off the top of my head, but
Okay.
It's an enforcement statute, I assume.
It, it is. It says, let's see, "Any town, district officer knowingly violates, or directs any official or employee to violate any provision of this chapter, or any other provision of general law relating to the incuring of liability or expenditure of public funds on any account, shall be punished by a fine of not more than $1,000 or by imprisonment for not more than one year," or both.
Yeah, I have it on my screen now.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's the whole
These are serious provisions. This is something that, you know, we would not be able to appropriate in excess of the mayor's budget without opting into this. That's clear. It's not, it's not a formality, it's not a, it's, it's a prerequisite.
Okay. And if we had not, if we had, because there was a lot of discussion about this provision, and whether or not it applied, and people suggesting we had, if we had stumbled into doing this provision and we hadn't found this issue, I mean, could there have been, I don't think anybody would go to jail, I'm not suggesting that. But, but, but for sure, the DOR would have some issues in the auditor, correct? Is that fair to say?
As far as Section 62 goes, you probably know better than I do what you need to knowingly violate. That's your, that's your work, not mine.
I think stumbling in would be, would be a good defense, but But
I feel like I'm in court.
Yeah, exactly. So, that's all, that's all that I have. Attorney, Stan, Stan.
I am not an attorney. I too feel like I'm in court, however. Good evening, Attorney Seawald. I have a two-part question. One, part one is, am I understanding correctly that if this, that this provision would require the school committee, if it wanted us, the city council, to consider a higher amount than the mayor proposed, to submit a specific number to us? It would not be simply the school committee would ask us to consider something above what the mayor proposed? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. I, I honestly, I've never actually seen this in action, but that would make sense, that it not be just a general request to exceed the number without providing you the number that, you know, by which they would like you to exceed the mayor's budget.
Thank you. And then, so part two of that question is, so then would the council be, would, would the council then have the prerogative of approving a number for the school department that was somewhere, well, it could be under what the mayor had proposed, but up to what the school committee proposed, we don't, we would not have to approve that exact number? Is that correct?
I'm reading the statute now. In the case of the, okay. What it says is, "On the recommendation of the school committee, the city council may by two-thirds vote increase the total amount appropriated for the support of the schools in the mayor's budget." So I suppose you could do that. You haven't seen it in action, but that makes sense to me that you could increase the mayor's budget by something less than the school committee had, had recommended. But we're, we're certainly a few steps away from there.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have a question? I have a question for the sponsors. In preparing this, have, do you have any kind of comprehensive list of what other cities and towns may have passed this?
Oh, hello. We haven't developed a comprehensive list. We have poked around. We have a running list. We could certainly read to you some of that running list, although there was actually a constituent who was on tonight, who sent a lot of this to us, and I wonder if you would be comfortable recognizing her on our behalf.
No, that's okay. If you won't afford that to us in time for the
Sure. And I would just note that East Hampton, for example, just did. Most of the opt-ins that we saw really happened in the last four years. It seems to be an increasing event. We did ask Ken Woodland at the DLS if there was something that triggered this recently that made a lot of cities aware of it, but it seems like there's been a cascading of opting in, but nobody knows why.
Thank you. Stan?
Yes, this question is also for the sponsors. It's about the timing of bringing this order forward. I mean, the mayor, in her state of the financial condition of the city address on January 30th, made it clear that she was going to be asking all city departments to hold their budget increases for FY 2025 to two and a half percent, except for the school department. And she identified the schools as the one department that she would allow to have a 4% increase. So it's been widely known for now more than 100 days that that was her thinking in terms of a, an increase for the school department. So I guess my, my question is, if you feel that that is not sufficiently funding the school department for FY 2025, why, at the end of January, you didn't begin this process of researching what avenues might be available for the city council to override the mayor, approve a higher number, and discover, determine that, that Chapter 329 of the Acts of 1987 had never been adopted by Northampton, and brought forward the order in February, March, or even April, instead of waiting until May 2nd, so that we're voting on this potentially on Thursday, the very day that the mayor's budget is being presented to us?
Sure. Thank you for your question. We were of the understanding that approximately two weeks ago, this was something that came to the attention of our entire government. I only have this through hearsay, that Attorney Seawald wasn't aware of this, that the school committee wasn't aware of this, and that Clerk Powers had to dig through old paper records once we pulled it up to find out if we had ever opted in. I think we all had the understanding that we had, and that that kind of opting in was in keeping with the type of government that we run. That being said, I do think that it's important to recognize that every time we are doing municipal work, we are really entering into a minefield of very nuanced, multi-layered legal documents that need to be cross-referenced, and it's always a possibility that a week sprout up that we just didn't know about. So I think this came to us because it was timely, and because someone in the government happened to get, I think, the more recently issued FAQ from the DOR that specifically listed this. And again, that comes back to this question of, why is that coming up in FAQs now? Why are cities aware of it? Why are cities suddenly opting in? We don't really know why this is something that the majority of us in Massachusetts are kind of just going to know about.
Counsel Rothenberg, are you, are you talking about the, the FAQ? I'm sorry, hang on just a second. Is there, is there a more recent municipal finance FAQ than the one that was, I think, last amended in 2020?
No, that's the one, and that's when we see this cascading begins, in 2020.
Oh, okay. So the 2020 FAQ.
The news to us is not that this provision existed. The news to us is that we hadn't opted in. That's kind of like the ancient history that we weren't, I think, any of us aware of until just about two weeks ago. So we opted this way, as we pray, Counsel Moulton.
I have, so I had, thank you, councilors. I wanted, I asked, I was hoping Clerk Powers might be on to speak to this, but that brings up the, that brings up the issue of the orders. And I wanted her to talk a little bit about the work that she did to research whether or not we had passed this. Attorney Seawald, do you, can you give us a little bit of background about that? If you're still here, Attorney Seawald?
Yeah, I'm still here. Hang on, I'm just trying to turn my video back on. I didn't do any independent research on, on this. You know, we catalogued the statutes that have been accepted in, in, you know, the online version of our code, and it wasn't there. And then the mayor's office, I believe, asked Clerk Powers to look through her records, and she found nothing.
Okay. So I just wanted to just note that all of the general provisions and orders that the city has accepted, there's, there is a list online, and if you go, and that is readily accessible and listed, and that, it was never adopted, but then, I mean, there was nothing on the ongoing list of provisions that was adopted, but Clerk Powers went the extra mile to dig into the boxes and make sure something hadn't inadvertently been left off that list. I'm not asking you, Attorney Seawald, I will say that that's my understanding of what happened. Does anybody here? I'm going to share a screen for just a minute, so I can tell folks, show folks what I'm talking about. If you go on ecode360.com, city, our city of Northampton, and our, there is, I'm not finding it right now, but, but there's a list of every order and provision that we have adopted. And you can go back, and all of these opt-in provisions that the legislature passed, they're supposed to be, when they're adopted, posted to, to Ecode. And so as soon as there was a question, you immediately go and look at that, and it wasn't adopted. And then Clerk Powers did an extra thorough search to make sure that it hadn't been missed and not recorded properly, is I guess what I was
Counsel, so Pamela Powers checked all that out, and there was nothing available, correct?
That, that is, that, that if, it is definitely the case that if we pass something, it should be online in the list of provisions we'd adopted. She went even further to make it, do an extra search to make sure that, that it hadn't been passed and missed and failed to record, is what I'm trying to say.
Sure, Counsel Algren. As long as I've been a city councillor, I've never heard of it.
How long is that, again?
Over 23, 24 years.
Okay. All right. Any, anybody else have any questions? Okay. I'm going to move now to a period of public questions and comments. Questions should be directed to us, not to anybody present. Counsel Moulton is going to write, be our scribe, so to speak, so that then when everybody's had a chance to speak, or ask their question, that we can then return back to Attorney Seawald or the, or the sponsors of the provision, if, as appropriate, to ask questions, to pose the questions to. So, and again, just to reiterate, I would like to limit comments or questions to two minutes, and ask that folks not, you know, limit themselves to one, one time. Oh, at the post, yeah, thank you. And then also, be, you know, please be mindful, if, if folks are, have already made the point, you know, if you could not be repetitive of other, of other comments. So with that, is there anybody present who has any questions or comments? Jim Nash is in the room.
Hello, councilors. So this, this particular provision, if accepted, will create budgetary mayhem. And I want to say that that is actually already happening, that right now, there was an understanding that this provision was in place, and it was, and that I think it had an impact on the way school committee put together their budget, and that, and that, and I'm not speaking for all of school committee here, but I think for some folks, the intention was with this provision in place. The, the impact, and I well understand the, the concerns that are going on with the budget, with the school department, but this discussion right now is affecting all the city departments. I spoke with a longtime employee the other day, 20 years working for the city, and they had a dream that council had redlined them, that that is what's going on, that the anxiety is, is extending across all city departments. And we're talking about other departments that have stayed within the bounds of the growth that's been outlined by the ma, by the recent mayors, and also endorsed by council in their approval of budgets. So I, I just ask that, I, I really worry about accepting this. I think we've seen where this can go, and I, I think that, that it's up to council to set things straight here, and, and get us back on the right track. So I hope that you do not support this provision. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I see a hand up of Paula Regano-Murray.
Hi. Can you hear me? I have a quick question, and just one comment. I think that there was some, somebody spoke earlier about trusting the mayor, and I also think we have to trust our school, our city council. And I believe that if you choose to opt in, like, we trust you to make the right choices. I think the idea that mayhem and bedlam will ensue if we choose to opt in says that we don't trust our city councillors to do the right thing, and I certainly do. That's number one. My question is, if you do choose to support opting in, correct me if I'm wrong, you can still choose to not add any money or change anything and keep the mayor's budget as recommended, correct?
We'll, we'll be responding to questions in our discussions after.
Okay. That's my question.
Meg Robbins.
Okay.
Meg?
Yeah, I -- yes. Okay, sorry, it wasn't working. It was post-nice. Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Thank you very much, and thank you, Attorney Seawald. I did have a couple of questions that came from that. My understanding is that the school committee submits a budget before the mayor issues a budget. So the order of -- and the process for submitting a budget means the school committee is creating a budget on a percentage or a number that potentially the mayor says, here's what I want to see from you. But they don't actually know what the budget will be until you guys do. So that's -- it's a process, and it's a projection. It's something to think about. I don't believe, then, that the school committee gets any voice in deliberations after that. It's all on the city side. And I also heard Attorney Seawald address funds that could be used, and he mentioned something about a school stability stabilization fund, which I was curious about, and I wondered if we could learn a little bit more about that. And I will agree, and I know you asked, Marissa, for not echoing previous speakers, but I really don't think we're entering an issue of chaos. What we're saying is that we're trusting our elected officials to be able to have a deliberation about what best serves the needs of the city. And if we already set parameters about what you can't do, then we've really tied that option, and we need you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody -- somebody else? Nobody else in the room. Does anybody else online have any questions? I didn't hear -- it wasn't very -- you were -- I'm sure you were a great scribe, but I only heard one question that might be posed to Attorney Seawald, which was about Special Education Stabilization Fund, but I didn't hear Attorney Seawald speak about that.
It didn't mention any specific stabilization fund. I was operating generally under what we call a 5P stabilization fund. I mean, each stabilization fund has a designated use, but I didn't call out any particular stabilization fund.
Okay. I will follow up on that, Attorney Seawald, though, just to say that there are a number of special stability funds, and the city can, upon the recommendation, adopt various stability funds. Is that correct? And then the quantum vote has to pass by, what, a two-thirds majority of council?
Well, it depends on the fund. I mean, your general stabilization fund created under Section 5P of Chapter 40 requires a two-thirds votes for appropriations, requires two-thirds votes, majority votes created, and a two-thirds vote to appropriate out of it.
Okay, thank you. Rachel?
Just to clarify, because it was brought up by a speaker, a commenter, if we opt in, we are -- the council's not obligated to utilize the provision. It's just another option we have, correct?
Are you asking me?
Yes, yeah.
Yes. Oh, thanks, Counsel. Yes, that's correct. This is, you know, this is, as I said, a multi-step process. This is just the first step, to recommend to the city council, for the city council to adopt it. Even if the city council adopted and the mayor approved it, that doesn't mean that it needs to be used at any given budget moment.
Okay, thank you.
So Counselor Elkins, the only other question that I heard came from Meg Robbins, and that is the timing of the school committees' submits a budget to the mayor, which is then incorporated in the budget that she submits to the city council. And I believe the question that Meg Robbins then posed was, does the school committee have an opportunity for voice, having a voice after that? Particularly if the -- if, I'm assuming that it was in the context of if the -- if this opt-in provision is adopted, at what point would the school committee have another opportunity to shape the budget that it was then requesting the council to consider?
That -- I'm not sure if Attorney Seawald -- he's the only guy here, so.
What do you mean? So it's my view that until the mayor submits her budget, the school committee doesn't know what the mayor's budget proposal is going to be. And after the mayor's budget proposal is submitted, the school committee would need to meet, to make a recommendation to this city council as to the extent to which they are asking the city council to increase the mayor's budget for the schools.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any further questions from folks out there on the Zooms? I don't see any. Let me make sure. I think they would pop to the first page, but I'm making sure. Okay. And any further questions of anybody on council, the committees? Oh, sorry. Andrea.
Just a quick comment that it is my understanding that the school committee already voted a budget with an amount that is being requested of the city council, and it is also my understanding that that will be the budget that will be presented at the budget hearings on May 29. So my understanding is that the amount that's being requested, whether or not that's the amount that is put in the budget that the mayor gives to the council on May 16, but my understanding is that the school committee has already voted a budget with an amount that they're requesting of the city council. Thank you.
I'm going to direct -- I have a follow-up question from that based on Andrea, your question, but I'm going to -- I see that Councilors Dobbs and Rothenberg have their hand up, so.
Yeah, I would -- thank you so much. I would just add to that question for Attorney Seawald. You know, it seems like oftentimes when we speak with DOR, DLS, Ken, and Woodland and his colleagues, there's a sense that the way that we govern ourselves as a city sort of leaves -- it leaves a lot of discretion to us. There are a lot of questions that we can't quite answer, like questions about how cities with strong mayors make appropriations across the board, questions about how cities manage their gifts and grants. He said today there's like 200 cities that they surveyed about ARPA grants, and they were like really surprised to find that there were like 50 different ways that they were managing their grants, and not one of them was the way that DOR had recommended. And it doesn't necessarily make it wrong, and it doesn't necessarily make it right, and our charters don't always, you know, list things with specificity, and then we have to look at precedents. And precedence doesn't always make it wrong anyways either. So I guess a question for you over that long preamble, to kind of frame it, is, isn't it possible, to Andrea's point, that where the language in the statute says, upon the recommendation of the school committee, and where we don't have a lot of experience and haven't dealt into whatever case law there may or may not be, isn't it possible that the school committee's budget could be interpreted by the city as the recommendation of the school committee?
Before we answer that question, I want to see if there's anybody else in the public or on the Zooms before we circle back for our last answers to questions. Okay. I'm not seeing any, and so I'll let Stan, you can fill in. I have a -- I would pose to Attorney Seawald, based on Andrea's question, that the -- Attorney Seawald, I don't -- the mayor is going to put forward her recommendation on Thursday, and when the department, when the school committee, I'm sorry, when the school department comes and speaks to us about their budget, they -- would they be speaking to the mayor's budget or to -- wouldn't they be limited to the mayor's budget in that circumstance? I mean, is the department in a position to come and sort of make the case for two competing numbers? I'm just a little confused by that.
Well, absent the opt-in to Chapter 329, there is no opportunity to, with the city council, to increase the school committee recommended budget, the mayor's recommended budget, to more align with the school committee's budget. So until there's an opt-in and the mayor approves that opt-in, there's really nothing to discuss in terms of the school committee's budget because, unless it made its way into the mayor's budget. So remember, absent opt-ins of 329, the city council can only reduce the budget, not increasing.
So I do want to try to get a clarification from you, Attorney Seawald, based on Counselor Rothenberg's question of whether the budget that the school committee approved on April 11th would be considered a recommendation if the city council adopts Chapter 329. Would that be, then, their recommendation, which was voted before the mayor submitted her budget to the city council? Or would the school committee then have to make another recommendation post-mayor's submission?
There is -- you won't find this question answered anywhere. My position is that until the school committee knows what the mayor's budget is, it cannot recommend that the city council exceed it. But, I mean, would I say that if the city decided to deem the recommended budget of the school committee to be a request or a recommendation that they exceed the mayor's budget, would the whole House of Cards collapse? No, I don't think so. I think it's a better process for the school committee to make a specific recommendation once it knows what the mayor's budget is. That's all. But there is no hard and fast rule. You won't find this in any book anywhere.
Okay, thanks. I have a question for you, Attorney Seawald. So the DLS, DOR, DLS, the Department of Revenue, Department of Local Services, they, like many other state agencies, provide guidance to those of us out here on municipal land, but it's my understanding that they can advise on the legality and what the law requires, but they're not in the business of giving advice on policy. Is that?
Well, that's absolutely true.
And so they wouldn't be in a position to say whether or not it's a good idea to do anything. They're just, they can say, that does not break the law. Is that fair to say?
I share that status with them.
Very good. That's helpful. Same thing, well, you mentioned outside auditor. Is the auditor kind of in the same position, too, of to flag if something looks like it's contrary to law, but they're not really in the business of telling us if it's a good idea or a bad idea?
Exactly. Absolutely true.
Beyond being able to say, continue down this road, this will happen. Is that?
Well, they could -- the auditors will provide goals for the city and, you know, to meet in terms of its rating and things like that, and describe how best to get there, but the auditor does not suggest policy in general.
Thank you. Counselor Elkins?
Thank you. Attorney Seawald, we did have the auditor in the Finance Committee last week, and I did ask the question about the state stability plan, if we could use that. And he said, yes, we could use it. So I talked with our Finance Director, Chardine Nardine, about that, and she gave me the layout about that, that, to her, she knows that he did make that statement, attorney. And she said to me, however, I will again state that these are one-time funds, and while our auditor, Tom Scanlon, said you can use these, it is not recommended that you use a one-time funds on recurring expenses because it just creates a bigger deficit the next year. Then she says, as a reminder, Counselor, the school was short 2.4 million in the fall of the year 2024, and the mayor used, which he did, 1.2 million of reserves with the agreement of a two-year plan with the school committee. So right now, I'm getting confused with this because we were told we could use it by the auditor, but then, which I have a lot of respect for our Finance Director, she is saying that it's not a good idea to do this.
So is that a question for Attorney Seawald specifically?
Yeah.
Oh.
I mean, that's her advice that she is saying here. It just creates a bigger deficit the next year.
I'm going to, I'm sorry, I'm going to jump in because I think this is getting into our deliberations and maybe some of the things we want to talk about, and maybe beyond what Attorney Seawald's sort of realm is in terms of policy, because I want to talk about that. What I would like to suggest is I would, if I'm not seeing any further hands, and if anybody else on the committees, if you don't have any questions for Attorney Seawald and the sponsors, I would like to close this portion of the discussion and move to deliberation, where we can get back to Counselor Elkins. First, we'll take a five-minute break. Yeah, that's fine. We'll take a, we're going to take a brief recess. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.[428.03]
They should not be, and I'll stake my reputation as a scribe on this quote. He said, "Use free cash and stabilization for one-time items. If you spend free cash for recurring expenses, it creates a budget deficit."
Counselor Mayory?
Yeah. What I heard was he said not to do that without a plan, and then he mentioned two- to three-year plan. I'm a little concerned that the stabilization fund conversation is going to get conflated with the provision. Just to keep that -- and what's on the agenda is that -- I see how it's relevant, so I'm not trying to shut anyone down, but it's just so complex, let's just make sure we have -- keep those two buckets separate. There's a conversation about what council can do in terms of stabilization funds, and then there's a conversation in the agenda item about -- a recommendation about this Chapter 329.
Yeah, I agree with that. Thanks, Rachel. Anybody want to speak to this specific provision and the thoughts about opting in? Counselor LaBarge?
There you go.
Thank you, dear.
I was told today, which I didn't know, that this order was presented at the school committee last week, and that five voted against it and four for it. So they did receive that order, correct? Counselor Mayory? Do you know?
Sure, yeah. Yes, they were voting -- there was a resolution.
Resolution.
They don't have to vote to enact this order. It was just a non-binding resolution or conversation. Yeah.
Yeah, specifically to -- the question was whether or not they wanted to recommend to us that we adopt this provision. And so my understanding is that --
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Rachel?
Yeah. And just to add on to that, you know, there's a lot of different reasons they gave, some kind of at first seemed confused about what the order did, and then there was some comments about they didn't really want to tell council what to do or not to do, but it wasn't something that needed to happen for the process. It was just something that they discussed. Yeah, and I guess I will, you know, I'll talk -- I want to, you know, about how I feel about it, and then we can see where we're at. But I want to thank the sponsors for bringing this to council, because, you know, we received legal advice and counsel that made us all think that we already had opted in. So it was good that, you know, it was discovered. As Counselor Elkins brought up, it's always -- it's good that we figured that out, and it's great that they brought it to us now. So thank you to the sponsors. Yeah, I just, you know, I feel like, you know, this provision would be another tool in our toolbox for council, and it would encourage collaboration. Because the mayor also has to opt in, I see this kind of bringing it, you know, bringing us together in this conversation. And frankly, you know, as budgets get more complex, especially school budgets, I feel like it's kind of a political burden that's put solely on the mayor, and we are also elected who should share that burden with her and take on some of that. So I don't really see a negative to this. We don't have to do -- it's just we're just -- we would just be opting in, the key word being, you know, option. We don't have to use this option, but it would be there for us. And I think it's something that, you know, the public is kind of looking for us. It would be hard for me to say to go back to the public and say, "We did not put all options before us." You know, wherever we land with the school budget, I think it would feel wrong to me to go back to the public and have to say, "There was an option that we just didn't pick up," even though, you know. So that's -- those are my -- yeah, I think that -- let me just see if there's anything else. Yeah, we don't have to utilize it, and I think that the state, you know, did -- when the state starts providing something like this, there's some wisdom to it as well. They were trying -- we do have a very mayor-centric and a strong mayor government, which is fine, but I think that part of why the state lets these provisions, you know, puts them forward is to kind of to give that balance sometimes when needed. So I think that there's a reason that the state has allowed cities and towns to utilize this. I may have other thoughts, but I'm going to let others speak first.
I saw Counselor Jarrett.
Yes, go ahead.
Sure, sure. Thank you. So I'm coming at this as a long-term decision. It's not just about this budget year, this council, or this mayor, you know, in that we -- and we don't even -- we don't have a budget before us. We're not discussing this year's budget in specifics yet. I find this a very odd structure with the approval of the mayor, who we assume disapproves of an additional appropriation, otherwise should have appropriated it. And so it's -- it is -- it's very strange to me. So I do think it very much makes sense that we normally can't increase a department's budget. It's the mayor that's in charge of those departments. If we were to increase those other budgets, she could just say, "Don't spend that." I mean, there's no point, really, in that increase. When we look at a school committee or a board of trustees, they can make different decisions about it, depending on how much money they have, and the mayor is part of those boards, but they are just one vote on those boards. I do want to say, for me, just speaking generally, it would take a very high threshold to choose to invoke this. You know, I fully support our financial policies. I recognize the need for stability in department operations, concern about use of stabilization funds without a plan to rebuild them. So, you know, that's just my general budget policies. So coming back to the -- like, we don't know if our current mayor will approve it at all, but in considering this, we also need to think about a future mayor who would never approve this, yet it might be appropriate at that time. In fact, that's probably the time when you would want to use it, is when you have a mayor that is, you know, not acting in the -- you know, the council would make a judgment, is not acting in the best interest, and a high majority. You know, the threshold is high, the school committee has to vote, and then it sounds like has to do an additional vote, and then a two-thirds. So I don't think it would create mayhem. It will shift the balance of power, for sure, in the city. I also -- but I also feel like I have just received new information today regarding -- I was coming at this with the idea that it would only be if you're going to reduce another department's budget that you could add. And now we know that, okay, we can pull from stabilization funds, that it adds another element to it that I feel I need to consider more. So, you know, I am coming at it that this could be an appropriate power of the council. I also have some wariness. And so I think I would, you know, I think I would support a neutral recommendation today, while I think about all of those things and the new information that we got. But, yeah, I see the positives to it, and I see the concerns as well.
Counselor LaBarge?
Thank you. Okay, we're all here this evening to talk about the introduction of Item 24064. It's in order to accept a provision from Mass. Derna law allowing city council the authority to increase the school department's budget in situations where the amount proposed by the mayor falls short of that requested by the school committee. Based on what we've seen so far, accepting this provision will encourage our school committee to send forward budgets that do not align with the city's fiscal priorities or comply with the physical stabilization plan. I worry that acceptance will make this routine. I am also concerned that to make and form budgetary decisions under this new provisions, the city councilors will need to expand their understanding of all school matters, and in any many ways, they will need tomorrow the understanding and judgment of our school committee. At the same time, councilors will need to expand their awareness of all other city departments in order to make the cuts that cause least harm. I feel that city council will be taking on responsibilities that are now relegated to other elected officials, such as school committee and the mayor. If the city council and the mayor were to opt in, it would signal to the school committee that they can continue in the years ahead to send wish list budgets to the mayor and city council. This sounds to me that they want the city council to tackle the school budget and make tough decisions. This would only encourage the school committee to see itself as an advocacy organization, not a responsible part of the city government's structure. I'm not a lawyer. It would mean nine city councilors would have to become experts on the credibility complex working of the school department. And how would the nine city councilors do this? Would we form a new committee? Questionable. We have a committee already responsible for this. It's called the school committee. These are difficult financial times, and difficult decisions must be made. City council should not be involving itself in the work of the school committee or taking on responsibilities of the mayor. Now, city councilors, we have work to do to perform our duty questioning, probing, and clarifying the mayor's budget. A document prepared by our mayor and many qualified department heads, a document that should also include the expertise of our school committee working in conjunction with the superintendent and our mayor. I am very concerned about the current conflict over the city, school budgets, and the mistrust it has generated toward city leaders. City leadership, please. We all care deeply for Northampton Public Schools, but I also care deeply for the city as a whole. And one department cannot thrive at the expense of another. So I am very uncomfortable, and I just cannot support this.
Counselor LaBarge?
Good afternoon.
Counselor Perry?
Yeah. So I feel -- thank you, Mary Ann, for speaking. I'm not going to go off much about how I feel, you know, what the school department or the school committee's role is in coming forward and really working on these matters before it coming to us. And I just want to focus on what we have before us. And I feel like, as Counselor Moulton said, when he asked about the timing of this, I kind of mirror what Counselor Jarrett feels as well, is that the timing feels off. I feel a bit rushed. We've heard a lot this term in particular about pumping the brakes, and this feels like this is being forced upon us right now.
Yes.
I would like to take some time. I see some of the positives to this, but this right now feels like a very specific answer to a very specific time, and I want to think in a broader view. A lot of why I'm excited to be a city councilor is because I have a chance to pull back and have a chance to shape what our future is. As people have said, a lot of us here have had kids in the school system here. But for me, I think I would be more willing to take this up at another time, to have some real discussion, to not have the pressure of this unique moment. And I also agree, as Counselor LaBarge said, is that, you know, doing this might also encourage the school committee to not do its due diligence and do its thing. It's easy to think outside of the department. You know, the school committee deals with the largest department in the city. Every other department is held to a standard, and while I understand that there are apples and oranges and other phenomenal fruits grown in this valley, I do think that it is important for our school committee to really work with the mayor, work with our finance director to kind of navigate this stuff. So I don't feel comfortable putting forward a positive recommendation. I'm feeling like a negative recommendation, but I could support a neutral recommendation for this.
Hold off on motions for --
I'm just --
No, no, it's okay. I just would -- I think everybody's spoken, so I would -- oh, I'm sorry. First attorney.
Still not an attorney. I have not gone -- I have not gone to law school in the last hour.
All right.
I've been -- thank you.
Counselor Moulton?
So this is Chapter 329 of the Acts of 1987. That's 37 years, and in Northampton, that's five mayors and 18 different city councils that have not seen a reason in the intervening years to adopt this measure, and I don't recall any public discussion about this. So I too feel that the timing is of great concern to me, to vote on this measure that would allow the city council to increase the budget of a single municipal department, one department, school department, would -- it's changing the rules of -- the protocols that have governed the budget process this year. At the 11th hour, the 12th hour, at the very day that we'll be voting on this is when we get a budget proposal from the mayor. And I think it's unfair to do that in the last six weeks before we have to craft a budget that recognizes the fiscal constraints that we're under, and that we, as a city council, have to balance the needs of all municipal departments, and we have to consider, yes, what the school committee has requested. And we don't need to opt in to understand what the school committee has requested. I believe that will be a consideration as we deliberate and hold our hearings on the budget. But to introduce this at the last minute, it's the timing is really, I find, outlandish, and I too would support a negative recommendation.
Now I think it is gone. I also would -- my vote would be for a negative recommendation from both committees on which I sit. I've heard a lot about a strong mayor and, you know, trusting the mayor. I think, however, that it is not -- the strong mayor is a form of government. It is a mayor that has some pretty specific powers, and I would point to the word entrusted. Our form of government is that we entrust the mayor with this. It is not a matter of, "I personally think this mayor is great," or then, "I worry about any future mayor being not great." It's that I -- we have to entrust some of these responsibilities in certain departments. I don't think it's an abdication of us as councilors to -- I don't think in any way it's an abdication of us as councilors in any way to entrust the mayor and to hold the mayor to what that -- the will of the voters and the democratic process has put upon any person elected to that position. So I also agree, Counselor Jarrett, that for me, if we ever have this provision, it would be a very high bar for me to ever get to exceed a mayor's recommendation. And while I don't think there's any world in which this ought to happen this year with this budget process, but this informs my thinking about it, seeing how all of this has gone down, informs my thinking about it in the sense that makes me think that probably if we ever review this, I'd be disinclined to vote to approve this, but I certainly don't think it's appropriate now. One thing that is very compelling to me is that under our form of government and according to our charter, we put the city -- we put the mayor at the table with the school committee. It would be one thing if we had a city charter that -- I don't think it's common, but I think it's possible that a city can set up a city charter and totally divorce the mayor from the school committee's process entirely. They don't have to. We don't do that, though. We send the mayor, she sits there, she is -- feels the pressure from school committee to consider other factors other than just the fiscal, you know, the fiscal issues at hand, and she in turn has to bring to bear what our city's policies are in terms of fiscal stability and our fiscal policies, and the realities of the revenue that we can raise and what we can, you know, bring to the schools. And hopefully, when that happens, we have a situation where we don't come out of the school committee side of this process with the kind of uncertainty that we have this year. We don't have to worry so much about the mayor recommending a different number than the school committee, because there has been a discussion and negotiation. And yes, some advocacy pushing on the mayor, but also the mayor pushing back. What I've seen this year seems to be just a disregard, a disregard of the financial realities of the city and an unwillingness to really get down to brass tacks about, you know, what our schools need to look like and can look like within what we have. And so that really informs me and makes me think that I don't know, even if there was disagreement, how we could take what has happened in school committee this year, take something like that process, and then meaningfully act on it in the time we have in the budget season. So -- and I will also say, I don't look at it as, you know, taking some pressure off the mayor. I think school committee needs to share some of this political
I agree.
heat as well. They are also elected officials, and they are part of this process together with us. So if the city is in the situation to make hard calls, I don't know why we are the only elected officials that are going to be asked to take the hit. Sorry to be blunt about that part of it, but I want to know and understand that the school committee is working within the same framework and realities that we have. So all of that to be said, I'm a negative recommendation on this, too. I don't know what motions are going to come out in terms of what people are going to --
I didn't hear you. What was that?
I would be in support of a negative recommendation, but we'll have to wait for the motions to come out and see what's recommended.
I just didn't hear that.
No, it's okay. Sorry. Rachel?
Right. So I -- thank you. So I don't see it so much as a disregarding as a call to reprioritize based on a new reality and a new reality for our schools as well. And I'm confused, because I mean, what I'm here -- you know, what I thought the solicitor said was that this -- the school committee would be the driver of this. So they are taking part of the political head or responsibility, because if this went into play, they would have to be at their request. So anyway, that's what I heard, at least. And so Counselor LaBarge, I just wanted to push back a little bit, because in the last two years, school committee, I think the last year or two, you know, they recommended a budget above what the mayor had proposed, and that was without this in play. So I don't think trying to control school committee by not passing an opt-in option seems like that's going to work. And I'm also kind of hearing that we, on one hand, are worried that school committee will get out of control, but also we're kind of saying we're doing their job. So, I mean, I think I'm a little bit unclear about this kind of characterization of the school committee. I think that, you know, 10 heads, 10 electeds, you know, 10 heads are better than one on complex issues. I think that we're up for that challenge. And I don't, you know, I also don't think that saying that one department would be thriving while others are hurting, I don't think level funding the schools is a school's thriving. The schools actually need more funding, and I think -- so I think that's -- I don't think that characterization is accurate. The schools are special. They have -- you know, they have -- that's why the state has made this opt-in about the schools and the schools only, because it's -- we all know this is a particular and complicated way, and it's a very emotional issue, and it's a very time-sensitive issue. A year of bad funding for the schools is a year lost in a child's education that will never get, you know, put back. And I think that's why the state has, in its wisdom, has allowed this option. And it's our job as council to make a budget, including the schools, that we can live with. And this, to me, is a tool in the toolbox for, you know, to approach this. So I will be -- I would recommend this positively, and I will be voting for this.
I think we've heard from everybody, so unless anybody has anything more to say, I guess I would entertain -- I think what I'd like to do is entertain motions for legislative matters, and then if you want to hand motions for finance. So are there any motions for legislative matters?
I move a neutral recommendation.
Second?
I second that.
Any discussion on the -- no? Okay. Why don't we do this -- well, do we want to take the motion for finance, do them both at the same time, or?
Usually we vote for one, and then that --
Okay. So Laura, if you could call the roll of legislative matters.
Counselor Elkins, can you restate what we're voting on?
Yeah.
For the public, because it's --
Thank you.
This is a vote for a neutral recommendation from legislative matters.
Counselor Elkins?
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
And Counselor Mayory?
No.
Laura, your mic wasn't on. I'm the mic keeper.
Passes a neutral recommendation to be forwarded to city council from legislative matters of three, two, one. Three yes votes, one no. So now we need a motion for finance. Hello.
Hello. I move a negative recommendation for finance.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Laura? Thank you. Counselor Mayory? No.
Counselor Moulton?
Yes.
Counselor Elkins?
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
All right. So we have recommendations from both committees.
We'll have to adjourn separate.
Yes. So can I have a motion to adjourn legislative matters?
I will make a motion to adjourn legislative matters.
Second?
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Okay. I'm motion to adjourn. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn finance.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Any objections? Ayes? Aye. All right. Thank you. We are so adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.